Okay. All right, it is Wednesday, August sixteenth, seven o'clock, regular board meeting. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I believe we just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the role reflect that members present, um, with the exception of Lance Ronstadt and Vince Tidel. Was this meeting properly notified?
Yes, it was, and as a reminder, it's been recorded.
Welcome visitors, any public comments? Right, highlight on news, there's none at this time. So move on to comments by board members and superintendent, the referendum update.
Okay, um, we'll start the four K edition, um, they're very close, we were hoping to be done by today really, so teachers could be moved in, you know, as with anything, there were a few hiccups, a few subs. Um, so, uh, flooring and, uh, ceiling grids aren't in yet, but their class, teachers are in their classrooms, working around the subs. Um, playground is installed, mostly just one little piece left, but the rain, kind of put a little damper on the poured in place, um, flooring. Um, so that will be installed next week.
All the blacktop and cement are done now out there?
Yep, the asphalt and cement are done outside, um, we're gonna be hydro seating, I believe tomorrow, areas siding. Um, and, uh, with, you know, completion of everything, um, by, you know, next week, by open house, when your kids show up, on the fifth and for the fourth, oh yeah, um, yeah.
But there's, you know, the hallways are lined with stuff.
Well, I see, yeah, mostly complete inside with commentary and paint and those such, so again, we're very pleased, um, with, with Mark and Johnson, and again, all but one sub, really, um, two subs. There's some hiccups at the playground, frustrating, but, um, and then at the high school, uh, um, lots of work Jay House with excavation, I mean, they've been going nonstop, sunrise to sunset since April fifteenth, so they knocked out the stadium thing and did that very well, and, uh, they're pretty much all done in back minus, um, well, yeah, they're they're pretty much all done in back, we want to expand that, what we have a call a temporary parking lot, or the new football shed area there. Um, it's gonna be a baseball, softball, um, even football parking lot, staff parking lot, so that was a nice addition.
Where is that?
It's right to the north of the football complex? And be to the east, football, southeast corner, yeah, right, right, just northwest.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's at an angle where you think north is exactly that way, but it's actually.
Northwest. So, um, the parking lot curb gutter, you can see the parking lot taking shape, yeah, lots of work there, and it's gonna be paved on starting Friday. I believe asphalt will be mostly done, they're gonna put one layer on everything for staff coming in next week, and then they'll put a second lift um, on more majority of it and get it painted for the first day of school, they're gonna leave a little bit to the east, northeast by the new CTE wing, cause huge heavy cranes gotta come in there and set those panels and don't wanna damage it, so. Um, we got a temporary plan for routing parent traffic through part of the parking lot, this doing a parent drop off loop, buses will be separated, so. Um, everything, yeah, virtual ed, um, will be all done by September first is what it's looking like, minus the furniture, um, and one, um, sliding partition wall.
Does Mark and Johnson, or do we order that house furniture?
We take care of that, school specialties who we, we went to. Um, so, um, we took care of insurance in both.
Uh, they were doing something with parking, I have been over there, I've been driving over after meeting, but is parking lot basically all in?
No, the curb and gutter, and you can see where it's at, and they're doing the final grading of the, you know, gravel, class five on the top, and it's perfect for black, getting ready for black, blacktop, so you can really see basically of the park.
They're just doing a first lift though, right? They're not?
Yeah, and then second lift will, will be done on them, like about three quarters of it, by the first day of school and painted and striped, good signage and showing parents where to, yeah.
Cool.
Yeah, we were, that was, we went back and forth and ultimately decided on that, uh, makes snowplowing out tougher if you don't have, you know, hitting the curbs and stuff, and thought, you know what, well, done, why not get it, so, um.
Football field, and so that's all done?
Been done for a while.
And we're not doing anything with the bleachers till next year, or?
Correct. Um, and then the track, uh, surfacing, um, you know, I needed a thirty day cure, which was up at the end of this month, but they had a little hiccup with one of their major parts on their one and only machine that they had still on, that comes from Germany, so that pushed it back, um, all over the weekend.
And we don't need it.
But it'll be, we'll have the first lift for the first football game next Friday.
We don't really need track for that.
Correct.
At that tail screen, really.
But the, the whole walking asphalt, whole walking path around, the whole thing is done, that asphalt's done, majority of the new plaza, concrete is done, there's gonna be some stamped colored stuff that'll go in next.
Apparently, whatever, we got our high pressure toilets in.
Um, yeah, so it's, again, the majority, you know, the, those projects will be done for the first day of school. Um, there's a new ticket booth and a, a archway and sign for the entrance to the plaza, the football slot.
And what are we doing for the?
That's coming in late.
Handsome, where's the handsome?
That's gonna go right there.
Stay where it's at, basically.
No, well, it's close, yeah, same, same ballpark. And then the whole CTE, uh, science, um, uh, uh, and business additions, they're just doing footings and stuff right now. The precast panels at the, uh, starting at the end of the month, first week or two.
So that construction is gonna go on during?
That part of going, yeah, so we're gonna manage, that should be, it's, it's a removed, um, safety noise, it'll be completely separated, yeah.
Cause we lived, lived through the middle school, where they had literally demoing the inside, it couldn't, I mean, it was horrible.
We've talked about that, I mean, their kindness until we're in the classroom.
Oh, and I know those guys have done it before, so they'll be.
Third grade of transitions and, and budget, under budget still, yeah, like, I could have off six hundred thousand, even with some of the, uh, changes. Which was, yeah, changes, so. Yeah, I've been very little on change orders, they change big hiccups, very few.
They all had market Johnson.
Correct. Our subs, subs, and again, I'll reiterate, Mark Johnson, so the subs have been great, you know, minus a couple of element. So I heard two things today, um, were one, that's the biggest playground, this company, this is what they do, Wisconsin Minnesota Playgrounds, it's the biggest playground they've put in, kids are gonna like it, it's been pretty cool. Um, and then that was like the biggest, the most busiest project Ryan or Super Tech High School's ever done. Uh, it's been a big project, but the amount of things going on at once, juggling was, you know, he's been doing a long time. So, yeah, and then the fact that we've kept our school open, all, all summer with kids driving around back for all the different activities and staff, this has been kudos to, I mean, safety's the first thing on the agenda of every meeting. Talk on safety and communicate real well at school, especially at the high school, you know, Pete Ryan communicating to the kids.
I would call a constructive positive feedback to Mark and Johnson, if I had one thing, is that take pride in your work, and, you know, when people come to the job site, don't have trash, I mean, they have empty cases and, I mean, hey, it's not, you know, hospital, they just have things orderly, to me, it's, particularly the trash, you're running equipment, you have one of those things blow into your machine, and it's, or someone trips on it, like, to me, that, and it doesn't cost anything. It's just like.
So you've seen a issue with that, or you're just saying?
We know, we went to the high school, you know, and to look at the field, and there were just uh, like a water, case of water and a cardboard and the stuff, and.
You're there every week, is it a pattern? Or that was just kind of a one off?
It was, it was really messy that night.
More, so it was a incident rather than a pattern?
Yeah.
That's my question.
Yeah, it was.
Right, I haven't noticed.
Oh, if it is an incident, fine, cause I mean, they're rushing to do it, I get it, it's better.
And I think.
And they would appreciate that.
Oh, that was when the turf people were there.
Oh, it might have been the turf people.
And they were working pretty much, you know, all day and all night.
Takes a personal.
Yeah.
The, the, yeah.
Yeah, so they don't need riding his.
What about the, remember we saw that?
It's all cleaned up, yeah, they, we did a punch list and made sure that they had all those areas cleaned up.
That, so, incident?
I think it was.
If it's an incident, I would, I would not, yeah, say it's working self to some though.
And even through the night, because. Yeah, so they were, yeah.
Cool.
Okay, any other questions about that? So we'll move on to WA's regional meeting, it's in Menominee, October fourth. It starts at six for registration and networking, six thirty is dinner, and then seven to eight thirty is the regional meeting program. And they do, um, recognition awards, elections, and then the future presentation is school board accountability practices. So, last year, we actually went up to Rice Lake, because October for the Menominee didn't work, but it works for me for October fourth.
I would encourage others to go, it's a good place to see other board members. The, I mean, it's not gonna change your life in terms of the presentation, but it's always good, I mean, they, they obviously they can do a really nice job on things, yeah, but you see other board members, you chat with them about what they do with this, for the most part, you know, at the leadership summit, Eric and I, where they're talking to us about what we do more than us talking to them about what they do, but I think that's part of collaborating with each other, so, you know, then you get a, I don't care, you get an award for the board that has the highest attendance at the meeting, you probably get a book. So like, Altoona always has her entire board there, like, okay. But it is, I think it's worth the thirty bucks or whatever you pay.
Maybe.
You're maybe. All right, it's a Wednesday, if anybody's. Anybody else?
I should be available. Last day of turnaround at Flunkhouse, I don't know if I'll be able to.
Okay. Okay.
Vince is in.
All right, so we have Jeff, Erica, Tim, and Dave that are for sure, we've got Josh as a maybe, Derek's really helpful, maybe, and I'll reach out to the Lance and Vince. Okay, so moving on, uh, scheduled presentations by guests and staff members, summer projects update. I'm Greg Green, building and ground supervisor.
Hello there, everyone, sorry I couldn't be there tonight, but we're trying to get a few extra things done here at the elementary. Um, it's been a challenge this summer, but, uh, it's going well. Uh, just touch on a few things, uh, the grounds crew are just trying to do the best job they can, getting around everything that, uh, is going on. Uh, they've been real active with the irrigation system, they've, uh, got hit seven times with that and had to repair that out there, but, uh, Mac has been doing a real good job of having parts on hand to get that working for the football practice field, things like that, so. Um, he's been doing a heck of a job, and, uh, Dominic as well, so uh, they keep up with the mowing the best they can, and they're just all over the place. Uh, the high school, uh, we've got, uh, the hallways are waxed, the rooms are done. Uh, we finally got into the commons area, uh, after the lights and the ceiling was taken down there. And, uh, now we're in there, and that's getting waxed and done, and heading down towards the auditorium area. And we're just picking away at that, trying to get that done. Again, uh, all the rooms are done now, uh, Martha, along with Jerry, uh, Jerry does all the stripping of the wax during the day. And then Martha follows up at night to get all the waxing done, and between the two of them have really uh, put it together to get this done. Uh, the other folks there too, uh, have been doing a real good job of, of keeping up on the cleaning. Uh, the day to day stuff that, uh, the school never sleeps there, and, uh, uh, have been keeping up on that, so they've been doing a real good job. Uh, middle school, uh, that, uh, building is done, we've got a few projects left there to do. All the waxing is done, all the rooms are cleaned, uh, we're doing some painting there right now. And, uh, got a, a few little projects we need to get, uh, within the next few days, and, and that building will be ready. Uh, Kyle, our new guy on the day shift, uh, has really shown that he is, uh, dedicated and does a very good job. The wax looks great on the floors, uh, Carol and Teresa Brady, uh, they're all doing a great job there, and, uh, that's great, with that, that building didn't have too much, uh, going on, a little bit of HVAC work this year. Uh, next year, to be a little bit more involved there with HVAC. Uh, the elementary, we are, uh, close to done, we've got a few hallways that need to be shampooed yet. As, uh, you were talking earlier, that we've got stuff out in the hallways, waiting to go into the new addition. And, uh, we're, we're anxious to get that in there, so we can get that done. And, uh, we got cafeteria, we've gotta wax that yet, so we're close, uh, we're, we'll, we'll be done. And, uh, it's just a matter of, uh, the timing of getting the stuff in that addition, and, uh, then we can get the rest of the building done. We are gonna get the elementary parking lots, uh, seal coated and re-striped, that is gonna be done on the twenty eighth. It won't make the open house, but it will be done before school starts. Uh, and that, that'll make it look really nice for the first day of school, uh, so we're ready for that too. Uh, the toilets and the concession stand, yes, they are gonna go in next Monday, uh, so, that's uh, good for the, uh, football, uh, uh, folks that come there with the, uh, expectation that hopefully they work well, uh, we've always had to uh, man outside that toilet, uh, that, those bathrooms, because they just didn't work very well, so I'm, I'm anxious to, that they work much better than what they had before. Uh, I, I think that's about it, is there any questions, anything?
Greg, you know, we're at the district office, I came in, I smelled the mustiness, so after the dehumidifier worked for a while, it's not covering it anymore?
Right, right now, we have, uh, we've still got that plugged in downstairs, I think it has helped, but we have found other other ideas that we can help that situation, there is a crawl space in the basement that, um, uh, we need to do something with, and, uh, Terry Freeze, our guy helping out with the HVAC system, knows of a company that can come in and seal that, uh, floor, that dirt floor, to keep that smell, uh, from coming up to the, to the building. Uh, he's used them before, he's, uh, he's about ninety-eight percent sure that this is the cause of the problem, and, uh, we're anxious to get that done.
My crawl space is just literally a hole in the wall with dirt, and it's right down the middle of this building. And, um, and then he found other things to efficiencies, with seems like this is too hot, too cold rooms, and so found out we don't have enough cold air returns things, and so again, Terry, Terry and Greg walked through and Terry took over.
Well, I'm glad the dehumidifier helped, but, I don't know.
Yep, then I, I guess, I have to apologize, I'm in there pretty much every day, and, and I I just don't notice it like a lot of people do when they come in.
Ninety minutes, so I mentioned it, cause like, people that come every day, after COVID, you don't notice at all, you know, it takes a stranger to come in.
Right, yeah.
Ribbon your whole home when you don't have a tissue.
Yeah, so we're, so we're anxious to get that done and, uh, and see how it helps, uh, you, I don't remember the first time.
People that are in this building, they don't notice it, but it's still there, so. I'm glad that we, it's on the list.
Yep.
Good, thank you.
All right.
Any more questions?
Do you wanna pull it up?
All right, next on the agenda is stepping review, human resources director, Michelle Martha.
Hi. Tim's gonna pull it up here, so, um, basically, just to give you a rundown, um, we haven't done a hiring update, um, at least since I started here in twenty seventeen. Um, so I figured it would probably be a good idea to just update you with all of the data that I have. Um, so human resources started here at Stanford Central in twenty fourteen fifteen, so pretty much all of my data is going back to twenty fifteen. Um, this is just a general overview of all of the data that I have, so, um, employees that have resigned, terminated, um, passed away, retired, and then total turnover, total staff, turnover retention rates, and then their average years of service. Um, so just a generic overview, um, it's not all of our staff, if we counted all of our staff, we'd be at like five hundred. Um, but in this, we're not counting any substitutes, key workers, part-time kids, care staff, board members, and, uh, or bankers. So overall, this is the news, our turnover rate trend is going downward, so we did go up a little bit right after COVID, which is expected. Um, it's kind of a, a market trend for all employers, is that, um, during COVID, turnover went down, nobody wants to quit their job. Um, and then right after COVID, it spikes a little bit, and now we're on that downward trend now. Um, retention rates, kind of vice versa, um, you can see it went up during COVID, um, and then came back down right after, and now is going back up. So both are really good positives. Um, and then just an overall general analysis, um, for our turnover rates, staffing counts have decreased, I'm sorry, have increased district wide by twenty-four percent since twenty fourteen fifteen, um, post-COVID in twenty twenty twenty-one, um, we saw that the trend increased by five percent, and is expected to increase post-referendum, so again, overall trending downward, which is what we wanna see. Um, for the retention rate, again, um, COVID in nineteen twenty, um, caused staff to not make any career changes. Um, and then post-COVID, the trend decreased, um, retention, and now we've been steady for about three years, at ninety percent retention.
Do we have any data at other districts, is that a good number or not a good number?
Yeah, so it's coming up here, um, so CISA, I'll, I'll touch on it in a little bit. Um, so all staff turnover by position, some of these are really hard to gauge, because, I mean, some of these departments, and we have one person in them. Um, but you can kind of see administration, uh, we saw a peak in nineteen twenty and a decline in twenty twenty-one, and now we've been steady for the last two years. Um, we've lost one administrator for the last two years. Um, auditorium manager, it was a one-person department for, ever since the auditorium came, um, and ready to left last year, so. Um, we just hired Mitch, and he's doing a great job. Um, counselors, we did see a peak in, um, twenty twenty and twenty-one, and then twenty-one, twenty-two, and now we haven't seen anybody leave so far, so again, another small department, only two pastors per building. Um, district office and admin phone, um, we haven't had an increase in staff totals since twenty seventeen, eighteen. Um, but yeah, overall, it just kind of ebbs and flows, um, food service, again, super small apartment. Um, but we've stayed steady for the last three years. Um, housekeeping, we are seeing an increase in housekeeping turnover, um, I think it's just the market, they're finding their jobs higher pay. Um, and also the hours, most people wanna work day shift, um, so we are seeing that turnover, but I'm hoping that with the increase post-referendum, that helps. IT, we did add a position last year, as we had a longstanding employee left the district, so that's why you haven't seen any change, and then we did add a position last year, we, um, maintenance, again, ebbs and flows, so this is our grounds and our custodians. Um, so we did see a couple people leave over the last couple years, um, and hopefully now that's trending downward. Um, nurse, so again, it's super variable, these are all really small departments, so it's hard to kind of gauge. Um, para groups, um, paras and teachers are our biggest groups, so you'll really see, um, the trends here, so paras, we did have an increase post-COVID, again, kind of goes with our all staff, um, but we are seeing that downward trend, and I do expect it to only downward. Um, we are probably gonna have to add more staff, but again, this department really does ebbs and flow with the amount of staff that we need, um, because it's based on student needs. Um, sites, we added, oh gosh, okay, one and a half positions, um, since twenty eighteen nineteen, so again, a small apartment. Um, and then secretaries, um, two in each building, um, with the exception of elementary school has three. Um, and then it also does include two secretaries at the district office too. Um, specialists, so this would be like, um, our speech and language pathologist library, um, so we did increase, um, a couple positions we added um, at the elementary school, but again, small group, so that's why you see that upward trend, um, it's mostly because we fired so many new staff. Um, and then another big group is teachers, and as you can see, it kind of goes both for all staff, so we are trending downward, which is awesome. Um, and then transportation, again, super small department, um, and when you have one person leave, then it kind of affects the whole, the whole grid. This is our turnover by building since twenty fourteen fifteen, so again, a general overview, and I'll get into the nitty gritty here in the next couple slides. So the average turnover by building, um, elementary school is our biggest group, and you'll see that in a couple slides down. Um, but the elementary school is about seven and a quarter, um, middle school is five, high school is six. Um, district office is one, seven, five, and bus garage is one, virtual is pretty much nothing, I don't even think it's a program. Um, elementary turnover and retention analysis, so kind of going off of the all staff and then the positions itself. Um, the elementary schools since, or I'm sorry, elementary school currently has a turnover rate of eight percent and a retention rate of ninety-two percent, which is awesome, um, increase in staff by twenty-seven percent since fourteen fifteen, and they are our biggest building at ninety-nine staff members. So they are trending upward, but we've also increased staff by quite a bit over the last several years.
So, can I ask a question?
Sure.
When you say staff, who is that?
So that would be all staff, that would be support staff, certified staff, housekeepers, everybody that drives in elementary. Yeah, um, middle school, average eight percent turnover, ninety-two percent retention, so the same with the elementary. Um, increase in staff by forty-six percent, which is our largest on all of the groups, um, seventy-five staff members, and the middle school is rock stars, they are constantly trending downward over the last three years, which is great. The high school averaged eleven percent turnover and eighty-nine percent retention, so right around that same ninety percent that we're seeing with the other buildings. Um, they've had an increase in staff by twenty-eight percent, um, they did have a. Um, they've had an increase in staff by twenty eight percent, um they did have a peak in twenty one, twenty two, and now they are on a steady downward trend. Um, which is what we wanna see, they do have um the smallest buildings with sixty four staff members.
Ninety nine, seventy five, sixty four.
Um, virtual, I just broke them out from the group, uh so average six percent turnover and ninety four percent retention. They have seen an increase in staff by over five hundred percent since twenty fourteen fifteen, they went from one person to now seventeen. Um, so they have seventeen staff members and again, their um data is kind of all over the place, trying to clean. Um, district turnover, so this would be um district wide, not just district office, so all of our grounds, um administrators that are district wide, so. Um, the DOT, D O S S, they are included in this, um library media, and also the network administrator. So average ten percent turnover, ninety percent retention, which we've seen throughout all of our groups um so far. Increase in staff by thirty percent since twenty fourteen fifteen, and then there are thirteen staff members included in this group. Uh, the bus garage, eight percent turnover, ninety two percent retention, um they had increased staff by twenty seven percent and they are currently at fourteen staff members. So this is what you kind of spoke to earlier, Jeff, so CISA, a couple of weeks ago, sent out a survey to all of the school districts. For specifically teacher data, I did ask, I submitted a data request, I think last week. Um, to all of the schools and I didn't get it back for their all staff, uh but I at least do have the teaching staff with the exception of Hudson Baldwin. Um, so it's kind of crazy to to look at this, I know we were all shocked when Tim sent out the data. Um, so New Richmond, they actually had a turnover of, I think it was thirty three teachers alone last year. And this year they're at twenty five. Um, so we're on the the downward end of all of these, which is good, um so we lost fifteen teachers last year and eleven this year. So kind of away from the turnover and retention, um onboarding yet, so um we have twelve and nine months support staff. Certified staff, which is our teachers or psychs, counselors, um substitutes, students, game workers. Um, every single worker has to be onboarded by the HR department, which is maybe. Um, this year, we have hired a hundred and fourteen people, which is insane. Last year it was seventy two, so we've had an increase of forty two workers hired over the last year. Um, Megan and I, we were talking this morning and we figured. Um, an average certified staff person is about four hours per person that we're working, um support staff is about two and a half. And then students, game workers, subs, third party hour apiece. So then just updates, so since I took over very lean, um last about a year and a half ago. Um, these are some of the things that I have added, um so DocuSign, which is awesome, Jeff and Erica talked about it earlier. Um, we started an internship program with Urban Falls, so any students that are in their junior, senior year, um they can have an internship with us. Online open enrollment and online benefits enrollment through E, so everything is online, paper free. Exit interviews, so um I've been working with the principals to go through all of the exit interviews and do those surveys. Also a hiring checklist and playbook that all administrators and um supervisors have been using. Uh, I also started a monthly staff newsletter, which is the Panda Press. So basically, it's any information that staff needs for the month, any updates, um links, things like that. I also go into the buildings one time per month, per building, sometimes I'm there on a whim and I'm there all day. So um but average one time per month, but I at least schedule. Um, and the staff have really found that to be very nice. Um, I also added a scale and EAP program for staff and their families. And supplemental insurance options, which we've never had before. So on the exit interviews, um so the positive takeaways is that we have a top-tier benefits package, which really was no surprise. Um, family-oriented employer, um administration board colleagues are all ranked at four. Providing adequate resources is also before, and then staff morale. So some things were a little bit lower, um than we'd like to see, average, we don't want it to be average or better than average, best school district in America. So we want to um look at improving our performance evaluation system, um provide staff with more training and development opportunities.
I have a client that's working on all of that four, two, four-hour thing, doing with AI.
Oh, wow.
When someone calls, it would search, first search would be within your stuff to give an answer.
Oh.
And then if that isn't, it's like a bigger federal question, it goes and it's it's gonna be way cool.
Interesting.
Can you do blacks? You you do everybody individual?
I do. Yeah, I like to personalize it.
And they have individual questions.
Yeah, I um, we tried groups before, um and just found that. They weren't getting that personalized experience, I want that face-to-face with them, so I can get to know them and they can get to know me. Um, and another thing that I have on here for my goals is that I want HR to help and not hurt and, you know, e- every single employer, nobody wants to walk into HR. Everybody thinks HR is scary and I want to make sure that everybody knows that our is open, so. I like to have that one-on-one, especially with new teachers coming around the school, a lot of times they've never had a job, so I like to kind of coach them up a little bit and go through that with them.
There's personal information with, you know, health insurance and you gotta change all that, I mean, you still have to do the individual session, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, they do a lot of the, I mean, it's online, so they can do a lot of the paperwork at a time, but onboarding stuff.
Yeah, it's mostly making sure that they're set up with what they have and knowing their benefits. Because a lot of kids, they've been on their parents' insurance forever and have no idea what a hazard of health plan is. They have no idea what a 401K is, um so just going through that with them and having them understand it. And ultimately, that's how they're gonna be better consumers. Um, so some of my goals are to provide additional mental health uh support tools for staff, so one of my things in my Panda Press newsletter. Is I've been sending out um mental health tools and I've received a lot of feedback that they want more of that. Um, also engage staff in their benefit offerings, um like I talked about, the personalized meetings. Um, also review and evaluate the performance evaluation system. Provide staff with retirement resources through WRS, so we know the county, they have WRS come in one time a year and do like a mass meeting, um I'd like to get that set up. Increase my building visits to two to three times per month per building, um expand the internship program through U of M South and Eau Claire. Actually, we just got an intern from South, so we're super excited about that. Um, paper-free HR department, so I'd like to digitize our employee records, um right now we have paper files for everything. Um, utilize Skyward for letters and tenancy contracts, and then like I talked about earlier, reverse debt mentality.
When you're in the buildings, what do you do? Do you just set up shop or do you, so they can come talk to you?
Yeah, I I set up shop in the staff lounge, which is interesting to hear all of their conversations, but it's really good. Yeah, and I get really good comments, really good questions, um people ask me all the time, hey, what do I contribute to my 401K? Can I up that? Um, oh, so many times this year, I've helped somebody download the Health Partners app. Buy the doctor, pay their bills, things like that, so it's just the little stuff that I'm able to help them with one-on-one, it's been really nice.
And what's your philosophy? What what's your role for our staff and for our kids?
Oh, I think I say this a lot, um so I believe that in my role, um I am helping the staff. Which ultimately trickles down to the kids, so if they are um not worried about their health insurance, not worried about their benefits, everything's taken care of for them. Then it ultimately affects the kids, that's why I'm here. Any questions?
So I have I have a question about.
Yeah.
So all this data retention and turnover and any analysis of why? I mean, on the exit interviews, do you assemble any data and say, hey, Tim, we're seeing a lot of people leaving because. This isn't as good, they're gonna get this better upon place elsewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd be a crack down in front of you.
Yeah, well, this is the first year that we started it, so it's kind of hard, but. I'm hoping down the line, we're able to really pinpoint from people's answers, because I have to narrow it down by building position. Um, so I'm hoping with enough data, I'm able to pinpoint different things that we can do. So far, it's kind of all across the board, but Tim and I have met and I met with the administration too. To come up with different things that multiple people have said multiple times, and so far, we're on the right direction.
I think kind of the strategic role for you.
Yeah.
Is that, oh, we're finding that this department has a higher turnover than anybody else.
Yeah.
Now, what's that? Do we need to coach that leader to do something different and that's hopefully, I mean, this is amazing.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the.
Increase the payroll compensation this year, get as high as we wanted, but at least, you know, we knew that that, right? And then um evaluate the performance evaluation system, no, that's probably not a reason that they're leaving, but there's an opportunity for growth, so that's something we're very interested in.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
Well, that was great.
Sweet, now I can stop crying.
Yeah, we turned up the heat just for you.
Great, thank you. Okay, next is financial reports, and I will read them, and Vince is absent. Bank account balances as of seven thirty one twenty three, Citizen State Bank checking, one, one million, six hundred fifty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents. Citizen State Bank Money Market, one million, sixty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. Citizen State Bank Money Market Fund, forty-six, fifty-four dollars and ninety-four cents. Citizen State Bank Money Market Suicide Prevention, four thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and eight cents. American Deposit Management Debt Service, hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixteen, thirteen cents. American Deposit Management Referendum, seventeen million, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. American Deposit Management Referendum, eight million, nine hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifteen cents. American Deposit Management Debt Service, one hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. Local government individual pool is at zero dollars, so our total bank account balances, twenty-nine million, eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars.
I'm going to read financial report.
Jeff made the motion, Dave second, any other discussion? All in favor?
I'm not a tight.
Close, motion carries, next is consideration of consent agenda. We have six full-time and two part-time curricular qualifications, enroll in virtual courses for the twenty-three, twenty-four year.
I will pull consent agenda as presented.
Jeff made the motion, Dave second, is there any comments or discussion? Hearing that, all in favor?
All right, all right.
Close. Motion carries, we'll move to the administrative reports, annual summary report on bullying behavior trend. And recommendations by Director of People Services, Leah Volker.
Hey, um so I'm here to give you two, um other than the next two reports, but our first uh report is on our annual bullying trends, and this is required by. Law that we report this out to you guys each year. Um, it's important to that to note that this report only. Uh, reports all incidents that were found to meet the definition of bullying and the bullying is in the policy. And it it's defined as bullying is a deliberate or intentional behavior using words or actions. Intended to cause fear, intimidation, or harm, and the bullying is representative behavior and involves an imbalance of power. And it must um and it must be motivated by an actual perceived distinguished characteristics such as, but not limited to age, the uh national origin, race. Ethnic ethnicity, religion, gender, gender identity, or sexual orientation, and it must um it must occur over time. So it can't be a one single incident, um and then it it's also, it can occur between student to student or adult to adult or adult. Um, and then there's the four types of bullying that it is, we must separate it that way to, which will be physical bullying, verbal bullying, social bullying. And psycho bullying. Um, I've included the trends for the last, um since two thousand and nineteen, as you can see, we break it up by building, we have to report it by building. We had one incident last year that was documented and investigated and and um. Found to be an actual bullying um incident, and that that incident was a physical bullying and it was student to student. Um, which resulted in an in-school suspension. Um, we had also one student or one incident at the middle school, again, documented, investigated, and then um found to meet the definition of bullying. And that was one, again, one incident, and that would have been a verbal incident between student to student, and it involved it. There is zero incidents um reported or found to be a factual, that means the telling of bullying definition. At the high school, and so we actually will report two incidents to.
We need to prove it or?
I just have to, it has to be.
Wouldn't bully anybody if I had to go talk to the E there.
And the question about that one.
And then, so now you'll do the report, twenty-two, twenty-three, seclusion and restraint.
So every year, we also report out our seclusion and restraint there to you. Um, I always like to start by saying seclusion and restraint are. We can legally use them in the in the proper manner within the district, but we must document them appropriately, um and staff must be trained to do so. Uh, we report out there's number incid- of incidents here, um we report both seclusion and the definition is uh seclusion is there for you, but it's. Restraining a student from involuntary movement of any part of their body, which could, um, sorry, I was going with. Seclusion would be the the keeping them from leaving their room, so a student could go into a room and be by themselves. As long as you don't pull the door or stop them from leaving, that is not considered as seclusion. We have a room at our elementary that we use often for online room, our students use it frequently, but many times they're not in there, it's.
So if you lock the door, it's a seclusion, if the door's open, it's not a seclusion.
Yeah, and technically, we can't lock a door, we we can hold the door, but we can't lock the door, so there's no lock on our doors.
And there's a window in there.
Yeah, could you see, I'm gonna see where I put the kid in.
Yeah.
Added room.
It does actually have, it has, you know, pads on the wall, but we, it is pretty much used for specialized kids. Um, rarely used for any other incidents, but uh it is legal to do that as long as we report it out the way it is. We had fourteen incidents, um which involve two to two separate students and both of those students are special. Um, this, the um, the one thing I'd like to note is too, these numbers fluctuate a lot from year to year based on the the needs of the students or the students that we get. Or have, or incidents that happen, so fourteen, fourteen incidents, um to me is very, very few. Um, but it doesn't also shock to me, shock me if I have a a certain student that comes in with that type of tending behavior, as a special child that we use them. It's just important that we're doing it correctly and that we're documenting.
So there's some benefit even to the kid.
Yeah, and so the 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 law requires us to report it immediately and write it to parents. Typically, if it's a specialized kid, it's part of their IEP plan, it's it's documented within their IEP, how we're going to use it, how it's going to communicate to parents. Um, if you, for, the law changed last year, so as soon as you've done two seclusions or restraints on a child. Whether they're acting, whether they're a specialized kid or not, you have to hold a meeting with the parent again to review everything, just to make sure they're on the same. Um.
And then two again, you have to do it every, so.
No, you just have this after the second incident, you always have to hold that meeting, but you don't have to do it after every two. Um, for some work that would be every other day, so we wouldn't want to do that, but um, and we do, we do follow them. So that would be seclusions, we had fifteen incidents. So that would be seclusions. We had fifteen incidents of physical restraint. Um, when we provide a physical restraint, um, to our students. These, these are all, again, we're at the elementary school. Our staff is trained and we provide them with nonviolent crisis intervention training, um, your need so that they're adequately trained. I don't want as a director, um, in the last resort, we would use it at middle school or high school level, but those kids get pretty big. Um, and the rest of people getting hurt. So it's kind of our last resort.
Fourteen was two kids, fifteen?
It was two kids, same.
Same two kids?
Yes.
Wow.
Questions on that? Yeah, and, and some of the recommendations that we, we work with my specialized teachers, obviously, are to identify the triggers for those students to avoid them, early interventions. Um, and then really just understanding and communicating with staff that this is part of the.
And do you feel any threat to our staff?
It depends on the situation. So like.
But in these two kids, there was, was there any, I mean, if it's a high school kid.
It would be different. It was in, it's in the best interest of the child and, and our staff, like, for sure, the elementary of all our buildings are very caring and they, in the very, in the vast resort, and they do it for the safety of the kid.
And you hear about, I don't know, our district, I say really, not maybe in our area, but you hear about teachers that leave because they don't feel physically safe. And so I just, I presume that these protocols are designed to not put our people at risk.
Correct. And when we work with a specialized kid, it's always a risk, right? Um, there's, there was a teacher in the army who was attacked by a student this year and he suffered some severe injuries. But again, that becomes, that's really about us where, you know, she didn't have the relationship with the student and putting her in the, in the right, the, um, the right position with that student. So we try really hard and I, my specialized teachers are amazing. They, you know, they know which their my disapp, it triggers a student that to do that or that's just not comfortable to that, or the student kind of seeks out that to that student and we try really hard to avoid those situations. And it can be different from day to day. And our great staff is wonderful. I just hate today is not, not the day for you to work with them, just because whatever reason, it, it, my parent staff does a really nice job of not taking that personally.
We love our kids, but I mean, I want to make sure we are not putting our teachers in staff.
Yeah.
Leave, can anyone seclude or restrain a student?
Um, anybody can in an emergency, but if, if it's something that if they're working with a child who has it written into their I E P or a part of the behavior and adventure plan, they would need to be trained. They should be need to, first, reliability for them.
Can you explain that training a little bit?
Yeah, so it's, it, the training is a de-escalation training. So there's a lot of verbal pieces to it, but there's also a portion of that where you you learn to provide the physical restraints, um, based on the student's size, based on, you know, what their behaviors are and and the number of people present. Ideally, you'd like to have two people who provide that, who provide those restraints at all times, even if one is somebody watching. So they practice those holes, they'll, they'll learn the de-escalation techniques to, to kind of de-escalate the situation. And I've heard that it's a bunch of years.
And even about the training and such, uh, does that keep our staff completely, um, free of harm if they've been injured?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. No, 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 no. They, yeah. Bruises and.
Oh, they do.
Bruises.
They get still kicked a bit.
Wrapping glasses. That may does. That's the population. It's, it's, you know, it's a behavior disability for a reason, right? And, um, it's, and our staff is really good about knowing where to position themselves and to take safety. But again, it sometimes it comes out of. No questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Okay, that's the end of the administrative reports. The key work of our school board. There were no recommendations at this time. So move on to the core agenda items. And we have, um, A through I for a consideration of second, or approval of the second reading of those.
Any challenges in any of these in the last of first reading?
No.
Send me Google the second reading.
Or. I think it's A through K is.
No, cause those are first readings and we don't even have to really approve them.
Okay.
Okay, so Jeff made the motion.
I seconded it, he seconded.
Oh, you did, okay. Eric, second, any comments or discussion?
This is part of your process. You're just going through and conforming. So this is good stuff.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Things which don't need to be approved, but we do have consideration of approval of eliminating board policy. Pension and expulsion, four hundred point.
Those are because of the P through I.
Right. Is it for something else?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a replay.
So Tim in, in, uh, J through Q. Anything in there that like you see is it changed from what we do now that like, oh, well, you know, we made a decision that we're going to do this or that?
No, no, it's all stuff we currently do with the lines. It, uh, again, it's better to W S P to make sure.
And I don't have the approved one, is it?
Correct.
Thanks.
We'll make a motion to approve item pass.
Second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, in motion carries. Are there future possible agenda items?
On the meeting in, I think it's September twenty. Um, the expectation and hope is that the Strategic Planning Committee will have a report. And we're working on this document that'll allow us to finish it. Admin will.
Okay.
Or do you have approval? Well, yeah, I think, I hope it'll be approved. Good.
Any other? Okay, so then our upcoming dates that are important, August thirtieth, we have strategic planning meeting at six here at the district office. Um, September sixth is another strategic plan meeting at six here at the district. September twentieth, strategic plan at six at the district. And September twentieth is our next school board meeting at seven o'clock at the district office. Mark it in your calendars. Okay, so now we can have a motion to go into closed session.
I like that motion.
So I have to read.
Second, I have to read the whole thing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That's why I didn't do it, cause I couldn't remember you. I knew you. Wisconsin State Statute nineteen.
Yeah, good president.
Considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or assesses responsibility regarding superintendent's quarterly review of goals. Make a motion to go into closed session.
Very good.
So Dave made the motion, Jeff second. We'll do a roll call.
Eric.
Aye.
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 All right, at eight o'clock, we're going into closed session.